Good evening, everybody. This is Thursday, May 28th. It is 6:30 PM and I would like to entertain the motion to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and their non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. So moved by Mr. Hayner, seconded by Dr. Seuss. Roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Hayner, Mr. Pierce, Dr. Allison Ampe, Ms. Starks, Dr. Seuss, and the chair votes yes. It is unanimous, 6-0 vote. We are in executive session. Hi.
How are you? I don't know if there's going to be any tea. Why don't you take this stuff for now and I'll get another coffee.
We were in executive session to conduct some business that was required to be in executive session, but I'm pleased to announce that we have concluded the reason for that executive session most joyously, and we will repeat our votes from executive session now in public so the public can see the conclusion of our work. Mr. Hayner, the first motion.
I move that we ratify the MOA and related documents in the contract with the Arlington Education Association.
Okay, moved by Mr. Hayner, seconded by Ms. Starks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is a unanimous vote. Next motion, Mr. Hayner.
I move that the chair be authorized to sign the completed contract when all documents are presented in their printed format.
Moved by Mr. Hayner, seconded by Ms. Starks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a unanimous vote. We have now concluded our negotiations for a successor contract with our teachers. The contract expired on June 30th. We will now have another three years with a new contract.
August.
We will not be able to discuss particularly details until they announce it, but the one thing I want to say is that in Arlington, the way we do a contract, we do a process called interest-based bargaining. A lot of traditional bargaining is very adversarial in that you feel you win when you get what you want and the other side didn't get what they want. Our approach is to look for common ground and find ways to make a better contract and find as many reasons to say yes to each other as possible. It's a very collaborative effort. The teachers and the other bargaining units who participated with us have been very positive, and there's been a lot of hard work on their side and our side. Mr. Pierce and Ms. Starks completed the process. Mr. Hayner was from the beginning. We did a workshop with the whole committee and the teachers last year on interest-based bargaining. The administrative team led by Mr. Spiegel has been outstanding. It's been a very positive process, and I've gotten an email from another district asking us about our experiences with interest-based bargaining, and I think that, you know, this has been an outstanding experience all around, and I want to congratulate everybody who worked on this. Public participation. Bear in mind that we restrict public participation to three minutes per participant and that we do not respond within the public participation portion of the meeting. The first person on the list is Maura McCarthy, who will be followed by Claire Cavatora.
Good evening. My name's Maura McCarthy. I'm the parent of a Stratton second grader and also a Stratton kindergartner, and I'm here tonight to share with you my reflections about the subcommittee meeting, which I attended on Tuesday evening regarding the rebuild and relocation of our school. I want to start by saying we love the Stratton School. We have amazing teachers and we're really pleased to be at the Stratton School. I want to follow up by saying I was really troubled by a comment that was made here, actually made there and made here, by a member of the superintendent's office, which stated that the relocation of our students to the Odison Middle School would be killing two birds with one stone. I'm troubled by that comment for a few reasons, but tonight I want to tell you that I'm troubled by it because I don't think it's accurate. I think that relocating our fourth graders to a middle school is not an appropriate way or an educationally sound placement to place our students during their fourth grade year. I also don't think it's an appropriate way to solve the problem of overcrowding at the Odison Middle School. Dr. Bodie presented enrollment figures at that meeting, which indicate the enrollment surge in our district is huge. I want to ask the school committee to please consider addressing the surge in enrollment separately from the placement of our students in modular classrooms at the Odison Middle School. It's clear the Odison needs more space. It's clear our students need to be in modulators during the relocation. That's understood. We're asking you to please solve each problem in a long-term, creative, and critically appropriate way and give our fourth grade students an appropriate placement at an elementary school that year. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Cavatora.
Hi. My name's Claire Cavatora. I am the parent of a kindergartner at Stratton currently, and I also have a three-year-old who'll be entering the school system, actually, the year after the proposed relocation and rebuild of Stratton. My husband, Christopher, is a third-grade teacher in Lexington and has been in the school system there for over 13 years, and he has had some experience with similar renovation rebuilds at his school, which is Bridge School in Lexington. And as parents who are parents of elementary school students and also having worked in the educational system, we are concerned just generally about our experience with the renovated product and the disruption level it'll cause to the overall school and all the students and teachers, the overall experience, and having the students come back to a school that really has commonspace renovated but doesn't do anything to alleviate the overpopulation issues in the elementary schools overall through Arlington, which even in the past six years are up almost 20 percent and seemingly projected to only increase from here out. We have heard that potentially Stratton is a district that is not seeing the same level of increase, but potentially redistricting town-wide may be something to consider, but to pour millions of dollars into a Stratton renovation and gain not a single classroom in terms of space doesn't seem like a well-thought-out plan, and I'm just here to express that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda will be e-cigarette policy. Now, we have a public policy class which is tied to Syracuse University graduate program, and I had the honor of being able to go and attend one of the sessions, and the topic was directed at the school committee. We were their intended audience, so I thought it would be appropriate for them to bring it before us, not just because it was a good presentation where that would merit it on its own, but there are also some policy issues that I think there are things that we should be thinking about. So I want to introduce Renee Hamblin, Mallory DeFeo, and Elizabeth Camya. And whoever is presenting needs to be at a microphone, so you're much better off sitting at one of the tables. You can be at that microphone too if you like, as long as it's a microphone, because this is live TV.
Oh.
And you're going out.
Little pressure.
You're going out to the entire world, because I know that we've got at least somebody watching in Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Probably my mom, too. So, as you said, we are from the public policy class that is taught at Arlington High School through Syracuse, so basically we've done a semester's worth of research. We chose health as our category, and then we pinpointed a societal problem, and for us it was e-cigarettes and how they're a growing problem amongst youth. And from there, we created a policy, and mind you, this was in a semester, so I'd like to think we did the best to our abilities, and I guess it really had an effect on some people, because here we are, but here we go.
So, our style problem. We said the problem was that Middlesex County youth are being undereducated about how big tobacco companies target us. So there's a steady rise in popularity of e-cigarettes especially, and the people who are currently smoking e-cigarettes will then start to use the more harsher tobacco products like regular cigarettes. So us as students, we have never been educated about e-cigarettes specifically. All of our years in school, they don't tell us about e-cigarettes whatsoever. The only way that we can learn about e-cigarettes is through the 84 Club, which is totally voluntary, and that's where our interest from, interest for this came up.
Could you tell us what the 84 Club is?
Yes, the 84 Club? Do you want?
Sure. So, the 84 Club was starting at Arlington my sophomore year, so two years ago. It's part of the 84 movement, which is 84 percent of students do not use tobacco products. Now it's 89, so it's a Massachusetts statewide movement, but other states have movements like this across the nation. And basically, we just try to get the message out there to reappears what tobacco companies are doing, because I think a lot of us are unaware of kind of like the insidious ways they target us. So, really, there's only 10 members. It's kind of hard to do a lot, so that's why I think it's, because this is such a big issue, it's up to the school now to take it into their own hands, especially for the safety of the students.
Okay, continue, please.
So, the causes of students smoking e-cigarettes, as you can see, will be the lack of knowledge and education that we have about them, the peer pressure, and the advertising that makes e-cigarettes seem very healthy, and also how the big tobacco companies are targeting us, using appealing flavors and colors. And the effects of students smoking e-cigarettes are that we are smoking them thinking that they are healthy and that students, that we're being pressured, and we are more inclined to then use harsher tobacco products, and this is hurting the health and safety of Arlington High School students. So here we have a graph of the daily cigarette usage among students. The blue line on top is the percent of 12th grade students who are currently using cigarettes daily, and the line on the bottom is, the red line, is the percent of eighth grade students who are currently using cigarettes daily. And although they are both decreasing, our focus is the gap between them. So it shows that in middle school, we're taught that cigarettes are not good for us and so we don't smoke them, but then as we get into high school, we are less educated about what they are, and the peer pressure is increasing. So that's where our main focus is, is the gap between the eighth grade students who smoke them and the 12th grade students who smoke them.
So, excuse me. So, from this, we came up with a policy that all Arlington Health classes will be required to teach a unit on electronic cigarettes and also big tobacco companies targeting tactics, because really the only reason we're informed about targeting tactics is because of 84. So a lot of high school students are unaware of what we like to call in the 84, cheap, sweet, easy to get. You can get, not in Arlington, but in some towns, you can get a single cigar, like one of those cigarellas for under a dollar. Sweet, they come in flavors such as bubblegum, cherry, limeade, so that's obviously not being targeted to any of you. And easy to get, go down the street, they're a convenience store basically on any corner. And there is a big problem with older people buying for younger people, but that's another issue. So this policy we came up with. So, the costs, I think, are greatly, the benefits greatly outweigh the cost, but anyways, you have to send the health teachers to be taught the new curriculum. This isn't actually a money cost, because through the human resources, Health Resources in Action, there are free Tobacco 101 classes, and I've taken that class, and teachers or adults can take that class, and then I think we'll be able to teach about the targeting tactics. Decrease health on other health topics, so maybe we won't spend as much time on depressants and stimulants, but that's, I don't think, as important right now as the e-cigarettes. Like, based on the issue at hand, you need a lot more time. A major consumer population will be lost to tobacco companies, and from us, that's not a loss. So, benefits, it stops the increase of tobacco usage. Like we saw in the graph, as you get older, you're more likely to use it, especially in high school, because that's where the peer pressure comes from, but the more educated you are, the less likely it is to happen. It eliminates tobacco as a gateway drug, and then fewer adult smokers in the future. If you are, 90 percent of adult smokers right now started before their 19th birthday, and if you turn 25, there's virtually 100 percent chance you will not start smoking. So if we can get them out of high school without ever starting, then we'll maybe have a tobacco-free world, which is our hope.
So, in order to learn more about the students at AHS who smoke e-cigarettes, we need to know like about the students who reported it. So we used our research and found the American Cancer Society gave some numbers about the students who reported using e-cigarettes. And so, we saw that there is an increase in the percent. From 2011, it was 4.7 percent of students, and then to 2013, it was 12 percent, and then we estimated that in 2014, it would be 14 percent. And so this percent change is huge. From 2011 to 2014, the percent change is 197.90 percent, which is huge. And we see if we don't implement this policy, we predict that the years is a percentage of students who smoke e-cigarettes, the percent is going to rise, as seen in the graph. And then, so, in order to check up on our policy and to see if it's working, we decided to have benchmark periods, and we did it every year, because we found that it would perfectly measure the progress and to see the amount of students who stopped smoking e-cigarettes. And it is, a year is an academic year, so it will show each year as we go on. And our benchmark period, you can see that this is, the blue line is the previous years we have through the data, and then the yellow line, we see that it doesn't go down initially because it takes time for the policy to implement and for students to get into classes, but we start to see a trend with the policy being implemented, that the students who are smoking or reported smoking e-cigarettes has gone down.
So, the feasibility of this policy, how likely it is to be implemented, so it is up to Ms. Bouvier, because she is the director of the Physical Education Department, and just based on Arlington's past and how they stand on tobacco products, we don't see this as a very big problem, especially because we already have a unit on cigarettes, so it wouldn't be creating this whole new curriculum. So basically, we see this as 100 percent feasibility. Now, as a school committee, this isn't really, it is up to you, but it's more in the hands of her, just because it's kind of a my new change, but why we're here is we just want e-cigarettes to be treated the same way, especially in the handbook, as cigarettes, especially for punishment. There's loopholes in that, well, it says we're smoking cigarettes, or, you know, this is an electronic cigarette, it's not the same thing. It is a tobacco product, so depending on how it's labeled in the handbook, it can be seen covering everything, and so that's why we're here. Any questions?
Yeah, before I put this out to the rest of the committee, you made a point of e-cigarette use within this building. Could you elaborate on that?
So, there's a lot of students in high school, well, not a lot, but a fair amount are using e-cigarettes, and the teachers don't know what they look like. They're not informed, and you could smoke them in a class without knowing, in the cafeteria. It looks like a pen almost, in some sense, so teachers who aren't educated won't know, and it's just, yeah, it's really trouble.
We took a survey through the 84, and it was, we just tried to get the whole community in general, and adults were more likely to say it was like a pen or mascara or just some crazy thing, and teenagers and kids were more likely to say it was electronic cigarette. So it's definitely something we know about and you don't, and especially as teachers. It's easy to get by. Some Arlington High School teachers are kind of oblivious at this. It doesn't smell like traditional tobacco smoke. It smells like the cherry and the bubblegum. So I've seen kids in the back of my class smoking them and using them, and it smells great, but it's not good for you.
Okay. To the committee, Dr. Seuss.
Oh, actually, I have a similar question. So the 14 percent number that you cited, is that for high school students in general or for Arlington High School students?
This is for high school students in general.
It was from the American Cancer Society.
Okay, so we don't know if your Arlington numbers are as bad as that, but you're suspecting there.
Well, we looked at the, it's not the numbers we used just for our graphs, but we looked at the survey that's given every.
Youth health survey.
Youth health survey. We looked at that, and there is a dramatic increase.
So there's a separate question on e-cigarettes in that one?
Yeah.
There is, so you have a sense of what the numbers look like?
Yes. There is definitely one on tobacco usage, and just based on being in this environment, I can only attest to say that the increase in tobacco usage is because of e-cigarettes. Kids are getting into them because they say this is good for you, and e-cigarette companies are selling them, selling them saying this is to help you stop smoking, but if kids are saying they're never using cigarettes, but they're using e-cigarettes, how can that be helping you stop smoking?
So the numbers, don't the numbers show a decrease in tobacco usage? Or are they, you're saying that they're not quite interpreting? When you look at those numbers for the health survey, they show a decrease each year? I mean, it's a small decrease each year?
So then it must, I know there's an.
That was our, what we predicted would happen if the policy was implemented.
I see, okay.
Mr. Hayner is next.
Two questions. How many of your peers do you think look at it that the e-cigarette is not tobacco?
Um, a false.
So part of the education is to get to them, but to get to the whole community as a whole, mostly them. The other part, let's make it clear, e-cigarettes are a tobacco product.
Yes.
Okay. A lot of my friends think it isn't and think it's a way of getting away from tobacco and stuff like.
Which, for some people, it is. If you've been a smoker all your life, like two packs a day, this will, it doesn't have as much nicotine in it or actual tobacco, so.
But it's still.
If you're in that case, but it's, they're putting, they made this product to attract youth, because that's their target population, because they know they won't have.
I just want to be clear that it is a tobacco product as well. Thank you.
Mr. Thielman.
Nice work on all of this, and you made a statement earlier that there are things that you know that we don't know. That's a big list of things you know. So, the question I have is, you're asking for a policy that a unit be taught in health on e-cigarettes, correct? So, if I, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, that's a course that's offered and described in the student handbook. So you're going to talk to the principal, to Dr. Jangor? Have you talked to him about this idea that you want to add this unit to the course?
We have not.
I like kind of hinted at it once.
You kind of talked to him?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought he was going to be here.
What's that?
Oh, we thought he was going to be here, so.
Oh, he thought he was going to be here.
Then we could talk.
Okay. So, as I understand the process, and this is, so I think the school committee usually doesn't get into what's actually in every single course, but what you should, my suggestion would be that you meet with Dr. Jangor. He proposed that this unit be added to the course and that he include it in the student handbook. And the program of studies, it's called, right? You call it the program of studies, right? Okay, so we call it the program of studies. So we, and we can, I mean, we can amend and approve the program of studies up until, I mean, the summer, we can if we want to, if he wants to add that, right? Or he can do it with, yeah. So there's time to take action, but yeah, you need to talk to the principal. You need to say you want to add this, and you want, you need to say that this, you know, the school committee is very open to the idea of amending the program of studies so that this unit is covered. Now, there may be a discussion you have to anticipate, which is if you add a unit to a course, sometimes you've got to, you know, drop something off.
Exactly.
So that's a conversation you may have to have. And there is something in here, just to, you know, you said that teachers, it won't be any extra time or money.
Well, there will be extra time.
Yeah, time, okay.
That was the problem. There's the health teachers taking away their time. It would be like two Saturdays.
Yeah, so you have to be, I think if the sort of, in your conversation with the principal, you have to sort of take into account the fact that teachers are going to need some extra training on it. But it sounds really worthwhile, and, you know, if there are other things you know that we don't know that should be in the program of studies, feel free to tell us.
Okay. Let's go back and.
I just want to add two things, because one of the, the primary focus of the student committee was to amend our course offering to include e-cigarettes, but the thing that I heard from a school committee point of view and as a school administrator, is that we need to tighten up our policies regarding the use of e-cigarettes.
Yeah, on campus.
On campus.
Right.
And that's sort of something that's within our domain.
That's true.
And I'd like to hear a motion to refer that portion of it to our Policies and Procedures Committee.
So move.
Moved by Dr. Allison Ampe, seconded by Ms. Starks. Mr. Hayner.
In that move, I'd like the committee to direct the policy committee to every place where it says cigarettes, put a comma, put e-cigarettes, just to emphasize it that much more.
Or maybe it should say all tobacco products.
Tobacco products.
Yeah, tobacco products. Including, yes, exactly.
However we need to amend it, we'll leave that to the Policies and Procedures Committee to make sure that our policies are tight on this and that the code of discipline within the student handbook is also tight, so that e-cigarettes are treated unambiguously like other tobacco products. Mr. Pierce.
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up that the Mass Association of School Committees, on their model policy and cigarettes, which is much shorter than ours, doesn't even speak to e-cigarettes. I think it's a, it's a new thing that is coming across, and I'm very happy that you're bringing it to us earlier rather than later. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to take that up with our subcommittee.
Maybe we can also bounce that back to MASC.
Yeah, yes.
And then, see, from there, MASC is the umbrella group in Massachusetts that has all the different school committees, and so if we bounce it to them, then they'll bounce it to everybody in Massachusetts.
That would be awesome. Yeah. Arlington has been such a pioneer, especially with the Board of Health, in really staying on top of what's coming out from the tobacco companies, but in Massachusetts, it is kind of lagging problem, especially statewide. There's not even a law that bans the sale of e-cigarettes to minors, so you can be like eight years old and go into a convenience store and buy.
Really? And they put them near like playgrounds too, like convenience stores.
Yeah, the 84 did a community mapping project just to see in Arlington how close schools are to, schools are to convenience stores and which ones sell tobacco products and stuff like that. And so that just, it's probably online somewhere, if you want to take that, check that out.
If you're going the next step, the regulation of sales of tobacco is with the Board of Health and the.
Yeah, well, I've been to a couple meetings and they're really on top of that, like six months ago, they banned the sale of flavored tobacco products. So we really have no problem there in Arlington. Originally, our policy was going to focus on the statewide level, but we decided this could be more attainable and we could actually see this happening, and it's come pretty well so far, so, yes.
Mr. Hayner.
Quick question. Does your grade depend on whether we pass this or not? Up to you.
Yes, maybe. Sure.
Would you introduce your teacher and tell us about how he has encouraged you through this process?
Well, he, well, he was actually giving a speech to us. It was our last day today, and he told us that when the kids came to the school committee or wherever they had to go about adding this, he was like volunteered but didn't really want to or something, and he had to go up to Syracuse and take all these classes. But coming into and teaching the class, the activities are so engaging and like for students, we did a lot of, to understand our every chapter, we had one policy, like the class policy going on whether we should legalize marijuana or not, and just from a student's standpoint, and though, maybe not I, but for a lot of my classmates, that was something, they were like, okay, I get it, I can relate to this. So everything was really well understood, and he was able to explain everything really well. Anytime we had a question, he knew the answer, and I think that's the most important.
And that teacher's name is?
Mr. Sanson.
Mr. Sansonito.
Mr. Sanson, who is. Mr. Sanson, who is, uh.
Coming from, he's a coach also, coming from practice.
He does it all.
He does it all.
We don't require formal attire. We're happy to have you. Any, any further discussion? Uh, this has been wonderful. On the motion, uh, to refer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the first year we run this course. And I, I think I invited, I think it's an email to just about everybody in here and to have, uh, a lot of great feedback, whether you could make it or not, and just the, the interest that you've shown, uh, has been tremendous. I guess this is my first year teaching it, so I didn't really quite know what to expect. But, uh, the, the, the kids that stayed in the class, they did a, uh, they did a fantastic job and, and kind of really took ownership over these. And, uh, the nine presentations that they've been given have been fantastic, and this is one of several that have been really, really well done. So, uh, hopefully it grows in popularity, but this is a little daunting, especially for high school students. So in the first year, kind of coming up, being invited to come up to the school, we kind of put them on the spot the other days. They had no choice but to say yes.
We're hoping that maybe, like throughout the years, this will become a thing that like, if you take this class, this, if you're the best presentation, this is just going to happen, just so kids are more motivated that there is an end result, they're not just doing this as a school project. They're actually doing it as something, so they choose something that they are invested in.
Well, I, I think you said that you know stuff that we don't, which is why it's really important for you to come and talk to us. And that's the message I heard when I saw you, uh, last week, and that's why I wanted you to come speak to the rest of the committee.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you can go home and watch it over and over again.
Video on demand, ACMI dot TV. Uh, next item on the agenda is our school calendar.
All right.
Did you get it?
One of the things that was actually very unusual this year as part of our, um, negotiation process was that we, we opened up some of the, the ideas that we were talking about for public discussion, um, both in district and outside the district. And one of the ideas had to do with, um, a new elementary schedule for next year, um, which would create a early release day every week, uh, beginning at one o'clock, students would be dismissed. Now, while the school committee tonight has ratified, um, the memorandum agreement, um, we, we still have to have an announcement from the, the teachers on this. But assuming that that is, that we have a ratified contract going forward, um, I prepared a calendar here, uh, with a lot of help from Karen Fitzgerald over there, who spent hours on this, um, creating a calendar, which is a little easier to understand, but I wanted to go over the high points of it now because parents were told back in the winter that this was a possibility. But I think it's important for them to know, um, that this is more of a likelihood now that this is going to happen in the fall. And, and while we, there's both pros and cons, I think, from a parent point of view, that it's, it's a change in schedule, um, that will affect daycare and, and coverage. But one of the things that's a positive about this, actually a lot of positives, um, is that it's going to be consistent. And when we've had early release before, does, you know, it happens on an irregular, and is this the week for a early release? This one will be, um, consistent. The only thing that will be slightly different is when we get to conferences, we need to start them earlier than one o'clock in order that, um, we're able to have enough twenty-minute slots for parents to have, um, conferences with teachers. But let's, but some of the key parts of this calendar have already been approved by the school committee. And by the way, I, I think one of the things I'd like to bring to the committee next fall is a, a calendar for the next two years beyond that with the start dates. We wouldn't have necessarily the early release days and conferences figured out, but the start date, so everybody can plan ahead and know, uh, where we're going. And, because we always start getting calls, believe it or not, in the early fall anyway. So, so that's, uh, we'll, we'll do that actually very early, probably in September. So, uh, based on our last contract, we, teachers do start before Labor Day, and this is, was in our original calendar. But what you will see here is there's a, there is a, um, a code for each of these. And if you look at this, we've put all of the early release days on Tuesday, including high school. And by the way, there are no delayed openings either for high school or middle school. This year it was a pilot, and after going through the pilot, decided this wasn't, uh, the best option.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because of?
Well, the, the, the one for the conferences for, uh, the middle school, it proved to be a little bit more daunting and task to have the kids occupied while the teachers, uh, were having conferences.
You're saying no planned or, uh, late arrivals for the purposes of creating conference time? You, we're not talking about snow related?
Oh, we're not, definitely not talking about snow related.
I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that that was clear.
Yeah, thank you.
See the last day of school?
Now, one of the things that is very unusual, uh, that the high school wants to pilot this, this coming year is to actually have conferences in October. And the reason for that is that they, they want to have parents be able to discuss placements in classes before the term closes, rather than have the first term closed, then you go to conferences, and at that point, sometimes it's very difficult to change a course. So, um, they want to try that this year, and so when there's an early release day in October, which is early release all on the twentieth, actually, that is going to be a high school conference day. That's the walk-in day. There's no appointments. But they're going to have their conferences in the evening in, uh, two days, um, in October. And we've, we've changed the format, and I give, uh, Ms. Fitzgerald a lot of credit for sort of thinking about how we can do this a little bit differently to make it clear. Down at the bottom in the center, you'll see all evening conferences, no matter which level, are all grouped together, and the high school are going to be in October. The middle school and the, uh, elementary are going to pretty much stay, uh, in the same, uh, timeframe as they've had in the past. The conferences for the middle school are spread out basically over a month, really. There's going to be two evening conferences, and there's going to be two afternoon conferences. And as we look at December, the middle school will have a conference on the first of December, and they will, they will parallel the elementary early release day. When we get to December eighth, you'll see an early release all, and what is, that is going to be a conference day for middle school and elementary, and that will have eleven-fifteen dismissal. So we'll definitely send reminders out to parents for that. But because the, the high school has been, is giving up their delayed openings this year and are taking one of the early release days in October for conferences, the high school is going to use that for an extended professional development time. Um, some other changes. So when, when we have these elementary early release times, we have set up a schedule for all of the types of meetings that we're going to have in that two, in that timeframe. So at the elementary level, students would be dismissed at one o'clock. There would be lunch on those days. In fact, the only times we do not have lunch are the, are the two days we have the eleven-fifteen dismissal. But in those, in those time periods, there's going to be, uh, in fact, the entire year has been laid out already in terms of common planning time, content, professional development, and faculty meetings. Um, in fact, that is, in what, in the contract that you, um, ratified this evening, one of the appendices actually has what that calendar looks like, so you can see it. I think that the benefits are going to be tremendous. It's such a struggle to find time for teachers to collaborate, um, during the school day. When we've done that, we've done whole class PD or even PD within a, within a school, the str- the struggle is getting coverage for the classes. And so what we're going to see next year is, is not the interruptions that we've, we've had. Now, there's going to be some PD, I'm not saying there's not. The lab program that we talked about will obviously have to go on during the school day because it's teachers observing teachers teach. But the other types where we've, uh, pulled up, you know, had to pull teachers out for data meetings, uh, for content PD, um, that is all going to go into these early release times. And, and I, I think everyone is going to really benefit tremendously from this. Some other, um, points to note on here is that, um, we've no longer put the snow, snowmen on. Because. I saw that. That was actually from my superintendent's advisory council because technically, the twenty-ninth is our last day of school in June. It only goes back to the twenty-second if we don't have snow days. Because by regulation, you're supposed to put, you're supposed to build into your calendar five snow days. So that's why we've actually sort of changed to saying the June twenty-second is the one-hundred-and-eightieth day.
They go backwards.
They're going to go backwards instead of the other way around. Uh, and it's important because, uh, it's certainly important for staff because they can't really plan summer, summer jobs or trips or anything until we, until we know which day we're going to have, we're going to be able to back up to. But they have to plan, and parents do too, plan, uh, students to be in school until the twenty-ninth of June. Now, that's pretty tight. We have one day where we have, if we had six snow days, we'd be right up, right up to the limit and, because we cannot go into the next fiscal year. So, um, I did see that the El Nino next year is going to be strong, which is a good sign that we might have a lot of warm weather, so we'll see. We hope. Um, so, but anyway, these are the, the main, the main things that are different from the calendar we approved, you approved back in the winter. Uh, now you have all the early release days and you have the, um, just all of the conference times. So tonight is a first read. We're not voting on the contract tonight, and first, we also really shouldn't vote on it because we don't have the ratification vote yet from the, um, AEA. So, I don't know if there's any questions.
And before we go to questions, uh, let me also state that, uh, I was asked to provide a, a draft of the school committee dates. Uh, I, I provided nineteen because I didn't, uh, do two in, uh, November. Uh, and, uh, it was pointed out that the policy states that we have to provide twenty. So if that's the will of the committee, I would propose backing up and having the first meeting on August twenty-seventh. Uh, then we have the discussion on the part of the superintendent.
Why don't we do the fifth and nineteenth?
Uh, we can't do November fifth because that's MASC conference. Um, and the other thing is, is that, uh, the superintendent has informed us, the superintendent and assistant superintendent will be at a conference on December, uh, on the first week of December. Uh, so that presents, uh, a, a second problem, so we can discuss the two problems, uh, right now. Mr. Hayner.
I'd like to, uh, sorry, maybe add a third one. Uh, Ms. Starks last year put a phenomenal calendar together for the, uh, budgeting process, which required some intense meetings at the end of November and December and balancing. So, and I personally think that worked out real well, getting the, the principals and stuff coming in to, to visit, which I, I think it had a conflict with a similar conference last year, so there was, I'd like to suggest, if we're going to look at the, our part of it, is possible, uh, meetings back to back. We've done that a couple of times before, uh, in November, and, uh, we, one of the November ones in our regular schedule is, a chunk of it is dedicated to the superintendent's evaluation. So we've got to be prepared for that too. So it's a very intense period from the beginning of November to the end of December.
Right, so we could do the twelfth and nineteenth?
We could do twelfth and nineteenth, and we could do tenth and seventeenth.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, that, and that brings us to twenty dates.
We don't have to worry about the August meeting.
So we don't have to worry about the August meeting. We can call a special one if we think we need one, but that we don't have to schedule it. Mr. Hayner, you may continue.
Uh, first off, I would like to thank, uh, Dr. Chesson and all the teachers that were involved in developing that very complex schedule to make the time balance and work with the early release day. It, uh, I, I agree with Dr. Bodie. I think it's going to be something extremely beneficial. Teachers are, are more active during the day than having the meetings at the end of the day after a whole day and stuff like that. I think it, I think it will work well. Arlington did it before, and it's now doing it again. I would like to also reiterate that I'm going to be the doomsayer. I don't know if El Nino is going to work or not, but if we have seven snow days, uh, and they happened before the magic day, I think it's April first.
April first.
April first. Uh, I just want to let parents know and teachers know that we're looking at something that hasn't happened, I think, in the history of the school system. Finding an extra day or finding something creative. Do, Dr. Bodie, uh, Dr. Chesson, do you, have we had any reaction from Desi on the creative thing that Burlington and the other school system tried?
They actually didn't try it. Um, there, there's a lot of press about it, but they actually never really had a.
Electronic makeup day is what they're talking about.
Right, right. They, they, actually, I was at the spring superintendent's conference, and the, the message from the commissioner was, start earlier in August. So he was not entertaining, he wasn't entertaining.
They're going to buy into that.
There was no discussion at the meeting about that.
Okay, so I, again, I'll be the doomsayer. I think parents and teachers ought to be prepared to potentially go to the twenty-ninth, uh, or whatever.
Yeah.
And i- if it doesn't happen, it's to the plus.
We're going to reply, or we're going to rely on your sunny disposition to keep the snow away.
Good luck.
I'd, I'd like to hear a motion to accept the calendar for first read with an amendment that we delete the school committee meeting, uh, of December third, and we add school committee meetings on the nineteenth of November and the tenth of December. So that would be the motion moved by, uh, Ms. Starks, seconded by Dr. Seuss. Who, every time she turns or moves her finger, she's seconding something. Okay, uh, Dr. Allison Ampe.
I just wanted to bring up one thing. I noticed on June twenty-eighth, it doesn't have an early release, and I'm wondering if just for parallelism, if we want to.
Good point.
Do that.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question about what, what does it mean to accept it for first read?
We've just done it for first read, and we'll have to go and vote it again at a subsequent meeting.
We're not voting officially, so.
But we, we. We're, we're advancing this to the second read in, in the, in the format with that amendment so that we can release it to the community, they see what we're about to do. If they want to come back in the room and start saying, oh, no, please don't do this, they have one more meeting in which to do that. Dr. Allison Ampe.
I just want to point out, if we do any releasing of it to the public before we vote on it, can we make sure it has draft written all over it?
Yes.
Because right now it doesn't, and I don't want it to escape.
So to clarify, so we'll put the draft policy on the website.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, with, with the intent that we'll vote it at our next meeting.
Eleven of the June, okay.
Yeah.
And you're going to amend it with those new dates for the school committee meetings and the, and putting, uh, early release on the twenty-eighth?
With an asterisk if, if schools open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just one caveat to that. I, I do need to wait, we need to wait until we know that the contract has been ratified officially from the AEA.
To publish.
To publish it, yes.
Even the draft, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, okay. Uh, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's the unanimous vote. User fee discussion. MASC on the list, uh, has got another one of these discussions on, on user fees and athletic fees. And Ms. Starks, uh, pointed out to our chagrin that we are one of the highest, uh, user fee communities in town. Now, uh, from my limited time on this, uh, iteration of the committee and my time on the committee starting in two thousand and one, we've seen a lot of creep on these fees. starting in 2001, we've seen a lot of creep on these fees. And whenever we've asked the community, particularly our parents, if the choice is reducing user fees or reducing academic core services, parents have always said, "No, please, we'll pay the fee in order to preserve the services." But that's the question we've asked. The broader question, I think, is, is this a town where we want to be the town with the highest user fees? And is this the way we want to do business? And I don't know the answer to that. I think that we should explore that question, and I think that we should also just take a look at where we are, what we're charging, what other communities are doing, if any other communities have been able to eliminate or reduce user fees without impacting academics, and maybe come up with a strategy or plan to go and address the issue if one emerges from it, much in the same way we looked at the kindergarten user fees before. Not is a plan of action, but certainly is active research and a plan of inquiry. So that's why I'm putting this together. I'm requesting your permission just to getting a couple of school committee members to do a task force or committee to go and do the study in cooperation with the administration to explore our options. Dr. Allison Ampe?
I just wanted to point out that while it is true that we have some of the higher user fee for athletics, it's also true that we did that not just to maintain academics, but also to maintain a full, broad range of athletic programs. And many schools are going, I mean, even on the list served now, we're seeing schools are cutting either some or all of their sports, instead of having high athletic fees. And I'm just, I want it to be clear that it's not just to maintain academics, it's also to keep the program going.
And we have some of the best programming in the state. We've got great coaches, great kids. It's something we're very proud of in this town, and it really unites our student body. It's an excellent program.
And truth be told, we haven't changed our fees since 2011.
Yeah.
Right, we set them that year, and they've been set for that.
No, we actually did change them slightly, but in a decreasing sense.
We made a couple of adjustments.
Yeah, because the fee numbers that were set did not actually bring in the revenue that they were projected to bring in. But instead of trying to bump the fees up even more to bring in more revenue, we chose to just take, keep them where they were, and use the lower revenue.
Mr. Hayner?
Two things. Without going into too much detail, we may have to reconsider those fees again with the existing contracts. Tell what, I don't want to go into too much detail. I would like to support the idea of forming a study review committee to look at other things, have other communities had some success in reducing or eliminating them. The worst-case scenario is coming back and saying, "We're fortunate to have what we have if we want to maintain that this is the only way we can do it." But I would support the idea of looking at it and...
Mr. Thielman?
So in 2011, 10, whenever we look at this, we didn't create a task force, a separate task force. We referred it either to budget or community relations.
Budget.
Budget, I think it was.
Budget did it, yeah.
And so I think, I'm wary of a task force because people have multiple committees they're on, and they're pretty busy. And so I'm wondering if just referring this to the budget subcommittee is a better idea, a more efficient use of people's time.
The difference, may I?
Dr. Allison Ampe?
The difference between setting a task force and referring it to budget was that budget was charged with, was tasked with the charge to determine what appropriate levels of fees would be, not whether, not the holistic, "Should we charge any fees or not?" And not, I mean, we did, there was actually, there was another task force that kind of fed into that from the athletic, I forget the name of it, but the Athletic Commission or whatever it was. And they gave us, yeah, yeah. So they, there was something that fed into it, and then budget just took numbers and churned them, and came out with what we felt was the most equitable way to raise the amount of money that we needed to raise to keep the program going. I think, I think it still, to me, feels like something that's bigger in scope than, I mean, you know, sure, budget can do something, but I think it feels bigger than it wants to just go under budget. I mean, budget can then take the answer and, you know, again, plug and chug and come up with numbers for you. But I think it's asking a bigger, kind of different question.
Could it be a task that the community relations subcommittee manages, or do you want to set up a separate committee?
I'm not doing community, who's community relations?
As the chair, I would be looking to chair this task force if you grant it. And I'd go with whoever on the committee, Mr. Hayner has expressed an interest, and if a third member would like to participate.
I'll be on that.
Dr. Allison Ampe, we have three people who would like to do this.
Let's all figure it out.
So, the motion to create a task force on user fees, and to be chaired by myself, and to have Mr. Hayner and Dr. Allison Ampe as members.
Oh, move.
Moved by Mr. Hayner, seconded by Dr. Seuss, the best second in the business. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We're up to monthly financial reports, and I think...
That was probably, should have been, we'll be down on the next agenda.
Okay.
Usually do it the first, the first meeting of the month.
Did we bounce it back? No, did we do it last time?
We did. I mean, I thought, I asked today if Johnson was going to be here. She's not going to be here tonight?
No, she sent a notice saying that she wasn't.
No, she's not here tonight.
Okay, I, okay. When I saw the document on the thing, I asked the question, I was told yes, and I prepared for it.
Sorry for the confusion on that.
Through the chair, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Hayner.
The fee that we charge for the visa fee, is that, I don't know, is that covered under the law the way our other fees are covered for its usage? I'm just concerned, I was looking at the, in the report that was given, as of right now, we've used less than half of it, the fees that we acquired. And I do know that we use that money for other things and things of that nature. One of the reasons we reduced the athletic fees and things of that nature, because it was shown that we were not using, the fees that we were charging were not being used.
No.
I don't know if this fee, this is independent of it.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
Yours.
Thank you.
Okay. Next superintendent's report, Dr. Bodie.
All right. I have a few things. Some of the things I may want to talk about, facilities, maybe just wait for a subcommittee report.
Sure.
All right. First of all, one of the things that I want to thank is the four members of the committee were able to make the staff appreciation reception last week. Thank you to Mr. Slickman, Dr. Seuss, Ms. Starks, and Mr. Hayner. It really meant a lot for people being recognized to have representation, and I know the rest of you would have loved to come but had conflicts. This is an annual event that we have, I gave you the program in which we acknowledge and recognize the years, three things, milestone years, in the 40s, 35. And we had, I'll just mention the two people who have 40 years. I think once you get to 40, you're really, the level of dedication is quite amazing. And two of them, it's our custodian here in the high school, Frank Burgess, and a person who actually runs the high school part of our food service, Janet Carlino. And both just wonderful people. But you can see in this that there are a lot of people who've had many years, there were 23 people that had, that were on one of those milestones. We also recognize teachers who have attained professional status, and that means that they're now in their fourth year, and have gone through the rigorous process of induction and evaluation, and have now attained that. The number is fairly large this year, because this was the year after we had the overriding, we were starting to regain ground on the number of teachers we had in the district. So there were 38 teachers, that's all district-wide. And then we had, we also honor the retirees, and this year we have 12, though I think there's maybe a couple more that are starting to announce. But some, again, one of our teachers who retired, Jeannie Wall, 41 years as a teacher in the district, is just amazing, just all wonderful people that have made such an incredible contribution. And I just want to read their name very quickly, because they deserve that kind of recognition for all that they've given us. So retiring this year, Ann Albertazzi, the administrative assistant at the high school, Carol Andrus, who's a reading teacher at Stratton, Paul Andrus, physics teacher at the high school, Walter Bedell, custodian at Pierce, Cindy Bouvier, director of wellness and counseling in phys ed, couldn't get the whole title on this, Cheryl Cristo, who is the choral director at the high school, Evelyn DeRosa, reading coach, Lucia Gentile, who is the food service at Edison, Barbara Gridley, who was a fax teacher and also a special ed teacher at the high school, Lori Johnstone, grade five teacher, hardy, Janice Satlakmott, who actually retired after the reception last year, so we included her, and she was a 40-year-plus kindergarten teacher at Stratton, and Jeannie Wall, who was grade three teacher at Bishop. So I extend from all of the school system, and I know from you, there are well wishes for many healthy and happy years ahead, and thanking them for the many years of service they've given us. Really, when you think about the number of kids that they have passed through their classrooms, or their cafeteria, or the halls of the school, it's just an amazing impact on the lives of young people.
It was lots of fun going around town giving out corsages. And they were happy to see me. It's so nice to go into buildings and people say, "Oh, thank you for being here." Though it was a very early experience, because some of those corsages to the traffic supervisors had to be delivered before they go off their post, and the one at the Edison leaves at 8:00. So this was a very early morning with lots of caffeine and a second stop at Cabrada for more coffee. But these are such wonderful peoples, and they were just so happy to be recognized by us. I know that Jennifer, when she gets to do this next year, it's going to be, it's going to be the highlight. I've got a couple of pictures of, that I sent to Karen. Go ahead.
Okay. I also want to acknowledge two students that are, have very special awards that have been given them. There was a contest by My Ideal School, sponsored by MSBA, and I think that there were over 1,200 drawings submitted into this contest from first-grade students across the Commonwealth. It's a very small group. And I'm very pleased to say that one of the winners is a student at Pierce, Bethany Chow. And so congratulations to her. In my newsletter, I'll get her picture up so everybody can see it. It's very, very cute, very cute. Then another special award is for a student, another first-grade student at Stratton, this is Brianna Gallagher, by the way, is the daughter of our former school resource officer lieutenant, Brian Gallagher, who noticed that there was a fire at Stratton, told her parents, and because of her quick action and realizing that this was, something could be serious, we got the fire department there, very quickly put out the fire, but it could have been very serious, very serious fire, had it gone undetected. Well, Chief Jefferson nominated her for a special award, and we just, we just were notified today by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services that she's going to be honored at an assembly on Monday at Stratton for her quick thinking and follow-through. So congratulations to Brianna. I also want to congratulate all of our art students and teachers, that going, for the last couple of weeks, we've had an art exhibit over at Town Hall, and today was the reception. And it'll still, will go on for, I think about another week, on the second floor of Town Hall. It is just fabulous, we get a chance to go there, and, of course, you can see examples of it all around here. So congratulations to all of them. One of our high school teachers, Ian McKay, received an award in excellence, which I'll again highlight in the newsletter, through his association for the work he's done in developing the economics class here at the high school. Last day of school, since we were talking about calendar, it will be...
Just on Ian, I had the pleasure of going down to Norwood, to the Massachusetts Council for the social studies, where he was presented his award. It was a very impressive thing that he got, and they gave out about six awards for different social studies teachers across the Commonwealth, and his was the one in economics. And he's very well thought of statewide. Carrie Dunn was there, too, and she just talked about how, what a good job he does for the district.
He does. In fact, he is the person who coordinates now our Syracuse program where we do the dual That's it. Other than saying the last day of school, it is going to be June 25th.
June 25th.
Mr. Hayner?
I just want to mention the Memorial Day program that was held at Edison School this, last week. I apologize, the teacher, if you could tell me his name?
Robert Bartholomew?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Jeff Melton.
Jeff Melton.
Jeff Melton is a math teacher at the middle school. He was the keynote speaker. He's a reservist who came in his full Navy dress uniform, and there were quite a few veterans that came that have lost comrades, and his speech covered, hit every one of the veterans present there, from World War II right up to present. And Jeff is also with myself, has just been put on the Veterans Council here in town. And the, his speech was fantastic. The teachers were fantastic, the students, there is no way that many middle school students should have been that quiet and that well-behaved for that long period of time. You could hear a pin drop from the beginning to the end. They were, the children put a fantastic program together with the support of the teachers, the whole staff, and everyone is to be commended for that. Thank you.
Consent agenda. All items listed, I'm going to ask to pull the May 14th meeting because I was, I missed 97.3% of it. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number 15169 dated 5/14/2015, in the amount of $440,395.40, and approval of the minutes regular meeting of April 30th. Ms., Dr. Allison Ampe?
I need to have the April 30th minutes pulled.
Okay, we will pull the April 30th minutes. So, we will now move the approval of the warrant.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Thielman, seconded by Mr. Hayner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. Next will be the approval of the minutes for the meeting of April 30th. Moved by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Ms. Starks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Dr. Allison Ampe abstains, 6-0-1. And approval of the regular meeting, May 14th, 2015, moved by Ms. Starks, seconded by Mr. Thielman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye abstain, so it's 6-0-1 on that. Subcommittee and liaison reports and announcements. Number one, vote to appoint members to the executive session minute review subcommittee. Mr. Hayner has volunteered, I have volunteered, and Mr. Pierce has volunteered. So motion to appoint Mr. Hayner, Mr. Pierce, and myself to review executive session minutes, made by Dr. Seuss, seconded by Ms. Starks. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special study group on superintendent evaluation, Mr. Hayner?
Nothing to report at this time.
Nothing to report. Thank you. Warrant committee, Mr. Hayner?
Nothing to report at this time. I signed the warrant.
Okay. Policies and procedure, Mr. Pierce?
Mr. Chair, we have two policies on the docket for first read tonight. They're ones that I discussed at our last meeting. I want to thank Mr. Spiegel for his work, and our council for going over the changes that need to be done to our FMLA policy. We also have added a parental leave policy that, under the law, we must have. And so we will be meeting on Tuesday evening, June 2nd, at 5:00, to go over any suggestions or thoughts all of you might have to these first-read policies. We'll be also discussing a few other things at that meeting as well, on June 2nd.
Any discussion? Okay, consider that a first read on those policies. Budget, Dr. Allison Ampe?
Nothing to report.
Facilities, Ms. Starks?
All right. Well, we had a spirited meeting on Tuesday at Stratton on the rebuild, and was mostly talking about how students will be redistributed when the Stratton goes under rebuild. It was pretty well attended. I think I counted about 30. I think I counted about thirty people that were there, parents. And also, we had one of the assistant principals from the middle school was there, obviously Principal Hannah was there from the Stratton. And we also had a vendor of one of the modular companies come. And it was the modular company that had done the modulators in Lexington and some of the surrounding areas. So it was really good, showed a lot of pictures. So I think at this point, you know, I don't think there's any question that modulators are acceptable. I mean, I think that he was able to answer a lot of their questions, which had to do with safety, air quality, and all of that, you know, was very, it was great to have the vendor there and actually be able to speak to all that. We followed that up by a presentation by Dr. Bodie, kind of on the process, where we were, and tried to give out as much information there as possible. I think the hard thing is that what we're seeing is that the enrollment numbers, or the enrollment projections, that were, some of the projection numbers that we're getting from the research people are starting to exceed even what Ms. Johnson has estimated. And so, you know, it was clear that, given that, that there are probably some changes in the thinking about what's going to happen. I think that the biggest concern that was there was still, there's still a very vocal group of parents adamantly opposed to having fourth-grade students at the Odison. And they're still willing to do just about anything to make that not happen. And so I think that, other than that, I mean, and, you know, we didn't, we can't promise them anything, but I think that, you know, if these enrollment numbers are doing what they're doing, and we have to put modulators somewhere else, you know, who knows what's going to happen? We told them that, I think that the biggest thing is that, right now, we're in the process of getting the designer, and we're in the process of getting these number reports. And once we have both of those, and we can figure out a way to deal with it, you know, I think that a lot of people just aren't clear on the fact that we only have so much money that we can spend. The parent who is here talking about Lexington's rebuilds, Lexington doesn't use MSBA, ever. They have their own money. They could build next to it and knock it down if they wanted to. I mean, they have rebuilt several schools without the MSBA. And, you know, so, you know, I don't think that you can compare, you know, what goes on in Lexington to what goes on here. And I tried very hard to explain to people that we don't hold the purse strings. And so, you know, if we had all the money to do what we wanted to do, we could do things very differently, but that's not the way it works, right? It's a, it's a, it's something that we have to, you know, work with the town to get the money, and it's kind of this interesting dance and process that has to go on. And, you know, it's not necessarily what they wanted to hear, but I think that, I think that a lot of the anger and confusion is not understanding the process, not understanding that we don't have control over some of that process. You know, there's this permanent town building committee. It's not a school-only committee, right? And so trying to help them understand that, you know, they were, kind of, some people were upset that this seems to be a very closed process. I'm like, no, it's just very scripted. It has to happen a certain way. You know, we have to do things this way with the town. And so, I mean, I think that that's where a lot of the anger and confusion and frustration that we hear from people is, and that's what I wanted to try to go and hear from them so that I could, because what they're saying is not necessarily what they mean. And so, and I don't think sometimes that they're hearing what we're saying. I know that some of you have seen some of the emails, and just the misinterpretations of information and words, I think, is kind of clear in that, and I don't think that anyone was, I think they just took some things the wrong way. And so I'm just trying desperately to kind of help, kind of clear that up, so.
Dr. Bodie?
Thank you. And it was, I think, very helpful to have another meeting, and we'll have more meetings. And I do agree that it's a process that has its own timeline to it. But I think one of the things, too, that can be, in the effort to be as transparent as you can at the beginning, in terms of what the thinking is, then that also creates other issues, too, in terms of if you have to sort of change as you get more information, then it's like, well, why did you say that? When we, when the capital planning committee was considering our project, part of a project is not only the construction, but it's all the other soft costs that go with it. And we have a budget for the construction, we have a budget for the soft costs, and that's what we're working with. And that's what we have to work within, which we experienced quite, quite a bit at Thompson. And which, by the way, we did a pretty good job with that. But as a result, there are, we're working in a tight timeframe, a timeframe, I say timeframe, but a tight budget. But I think that we can do it and do it well. So we, I'm happy to report that there was another meeting the next night with, there's a parent committee that's been formed, that has representatives from every grade, and then some other people. And they had a very good meeting. Ms. Murphy came and talked about what could be done in terms of allaying some of the concerns. And the report to me was, it was very positive, a lot of good ideas, because we want the parents to be involved in helping to make this a very positive experience. To the extent that we can keep, you know, as much of the school in one spot, obviously for transportation costs, we want to do that. Whether that's going to work out, as we work with this designer and get, really look at all the numbers and the costs is another thing. But when you go out to create an RFP, you have to know what you're doing. And so there was just simply preliminary plan. And I was very clear, even when I first put the letter out, this is preliminary. So we're going to take another look at all the six elementary schools in terms of enrollment issues, and what that looks like, and what classrooms might be available or not available. Two years, we're talking about two years out. And it's hard enough predicting the number of classrooms we're going to have for September, let alone another year beyond that. So I think, it's, anytime there's this kind of change, there's always going to be upset. That was true with Thompson. There were a lot of concerns, a lot of worries, and parents were very good about giving us ideas that we could work with. And I thought it was a very positive experience all around, very positive.
Dr. Allison?
I had a question. So I'm hearing through email and phone calls that there were proposals that were presented at the Stratton meeting that were different than anything I had heard. And I'm wondering how school committee members can, I'm sorry, I had a schedule conflict and wasn't able to attend. I'm wondering how school committee members and perhaps the public can learn more about these other proposals? Because I looked on our notice, there wasn't anything.
Those proposals were from the parents? No, no, actually.
What proposals?
No.
So, for example, like at Thompson?
I think the location-
What I was saying is that, you know, these are examples of two schools that are growing, and we're going to look at all six. All, I said that several times, we're going to look at all six. And yes, we did say that we had Thompson and Hardy up there, because they are growing. They're growing, and we're seeing that now even with kindergarten registrations, that they're growing faster than some of the other schools. So we have more information than we had even five months ago, which I think has to be, so we don't have, I have to say this right now, we do not, we are going to look at all six elementary schools in light of new information before we make a final decision as to what the plan will be. And that is the problem with going, letting, being transparent and going through the process is that, you know, well, that's not the plan you told us. Well, that was, that was, the plan was based on the best knowledge we had at the time, and needing to be able to have some idea of how, how we would do this, so the capital planning committee could go out and have a number to work with.
I think-
Okay, Mr. Hayner?
Two things I want, I'm the committee's representative on the permanent town building committee. Last night, the subcommittee met to review the bids that had come out on this design phase. We narrowed them down to invite three of those people to come and meet next Tuesday night, and hopefully, there'll be interviews starting at seven-thirty. It's an open meeting. Hopefully, after those interviews, we will probably meet and pick one for that. So that piece of the thing, we have some dates on, that aspect of it. I think the meeting the other night, on Thursday night, was good. I think things, a lot of things were said that, a little bit shocking, some of the things that the parents said. My only concern in the night is that, and things got a little upset, is that a statement was made that, and when people are emotionally involved, they perceive things differently. And the statement was made, well, we can drop the whole project. I think that was done in frustration by a member of the administration, and it should not have happened. It can't happen, number one, because we don't control that, that it belongs to the town. The whole Stratton thing belongs to the town. It was done in frustration, and hindsight is always good, to look back on what I shouldn't have done, or I didn't do it, but, I mean, I understand it. I just want to tell the parents that we all understand, the Stratton project is going forward. It may not look exactly the way today, the end product may not look like what we perceive it even today. Things are going to change. We have the design phase, that's moving forward, it's going to hopefully have a design picked by next Tuesday going forward. Dr. Bodie already indicated there'd be potentially another meeting by the end of June. And I think the hardest part is going to be, when are we going to know what is happening to work out the art, music, PE, and all those other logistical things? You need a building, you need a, where the kids are going to go and what age level, and then you can look at it. And until that's done, easy for us to tell, hard for you to do, and I appreciate that. But as quick as that message can get out to the parents, that much more.
You mean the message about specials?
The specials and stuff like that.
What I said is, right now, the focus has to be on this big issue.
Right.
Then we're going to get to it.
That's what I'm saying.
But in fact, one of the things that Ms. Murphy was saying at the meeting, the subsequent night, is that parents didn't know, for example, that the first lunch at Odison's at eleven-thirty. Well, we'll have a lunch just for students there at eleven. So they would have their own, we're going to have lunch in the cafeteria. So it's little things like that, but, and that was kind of thinking is already going forward. But in terms of how we're going to deal with, you know, special education, liaison, there's just, there's a lot that's going to go into this, a lot of planning.
The other exciting part in the proposals, and again, it still lays on the design, this could be changed, but the ones that I read had the modules designed, looked at, manufactured. I think the, one of them indicated that the latest would be mid-spring. So that's a good thing, that pressure to put the time in design. They all emphasize the importance of getting feedback from the schools, from the parents, from the teachers and educators, and doing this. Modules today are not trailers, that, I mean, you can buy those, there's one down at the fire station right now, but all that is, is an office temporary. They are, the major difference is, they build them off-site instead of onsite. But they're, they're really fantastic. They're going to add addition to a building.
An addition, essentially.
They're an addition to the building. They're not this quick and fancy thing that you put up and walk away from. They're not trailers, by any means.
Dr. Seuss?
Oh, I just wanted to pick up on what Dr. Allison Ampe said. And I know that I also was surprised by hearing from parents, information that we hadn't seen yet. And it just comes up a couple of times, actually, it came up last year with kindergarten numbers as well. So it, there just would be great to have some sort of vehicle when there's new information out there, that we somehow, we're not sort of blinded by parents telling us that there's a-
It was just in the discussion, though. There's no, there's no controlling it. There wasn't any, there's not, there was not a new plan.
No, that was not what we got. We got, I actually, I specifically then sent something to Diane Johnson, asking if what the parent had said to me was true, and she said, yes. So it wasn't, it wasn't a-
No, there was, I'm telling you, I was there. There was no new plan given out. There is no new information that you're using. This was all in discussion?
Actually, this was about the plan to put modulators at Thompson.
No, there is no plan to do that. We are looking into every school due to enrollment. That's all we said.
All right.
There was no new plan. There is nothing.
I think what happens, and I forget who made the point, is sometimes what, you know, you have, I've learned this, you know, you can say it, but you have probably said it many times, because people hear it through what they're, a filter, or they're emotional. The numbers on enrollments, you've had these for a long time. These are just nothing new in terms of elementary enrollment. But, you know, we've talked about the increasing enrollments in kindergartens, and I have to, you know, I don't want, I want this to be as transparent as possible. I don't want a surprise later on when they said, okay, oh, by the way, we're going to put it at this school, and we never mentioned that school before.
Right.
Didn't want to do that, so.
Right, but we, as a school committee, hadn't heard that. So it's just sort of be a great way to find some ways that we can get that information as parents are getting it. So parents are being told about various possibilities, even though they're not set in stone, and unless we're at the meeting, and we could have all gone to the meeting, but, but, but we didn't, right, and we wouldn't get that information except through parents. So it's just frustrating to have that.
Right, so we'll try to think, you know.
Some sort of vehicle that we can-
Give you the PowerPoint ahead of time, or-
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
A PowerPoint ahead of time, and maybe a couple of quick notes or points.
Or now.
But the thing is, is we're within forty-eight hours from the meeting happening.
It's on the website.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Thielman?
So, just a couple of takeaways I want to clarify. One thing that I'm taking away from the conversation is that it is possible there'll be some modulators that will stay more than one year, and more, in addition to the Odison Middle School. So I think it's an important thing for the public to understand that.
Yeah.
We're looking at some modulators that might be there for a longer period of time to alleviate some of the enrollment growth that was raised in the conversations we had. The other thing that, you know, we didn't get a chance to get to the other night, is that, you know, there are some educational advantages to having elementary school children on a middle school campus, that I hope we get a chance to highlight as this discussion moves forward. You have, they're going to get exposure to the middle school before other children. That can be fun and exciting to a certain degree. It's a fact that if you have fourth and fifth-grade teachers on the same campus with six, seventh, and eighth-grade teachers, and you use their time wisely, they can improve their practice because they're going to see what's expected at the higher grade levels. So, and that's a positive for Stratton kids in the future, and maybe all kids in the district, too. So there's a lot of other positives that, you know, it's not ideal, the fears are understandable. I think any parent would have the same fears. But there's a lot of positives that could come out of this, and I hope they're highlighted as this process goes forward. A lot of educational positives that I see.
And one is the other way around, too. It's the middle school teachers being able to see, we've always talked about them going out to the elementary schools and observing, but it's, it's hard, you know, to do it, but they're going to have classes right there.
They can observe classes and see what's going on in those classes, and the fourth and fifth-grade teachers can observe sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade teachers teaching and see what the expectations are there. Yeah, right. Yeah, it's a lot, a lot of positives from a PD perspective.
Mr. Hayner?
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Thielman. I think the fifth grade, and it indicates with the lack of concern, not lack of concern, but not a negative concern from the fifth-grade parents. We're not hearing from fifth-grade parents.
Third-grade parents, yeah.
And that adjustment. As an educator, as a parent, I see a fourth grade, in the third grade, coming from an elementary environment to a quasielementary environment in the fourth grade, back to an elementary environment, then to a, I think. Kids, I said it before, and I'll say it again, kids are adaptable. Parents have less adaptability, and it's a justifiable concern in their part. If we can make it easier, what I'm hearing, we're going to try to make it easier. If we can't, we'll have, make it as smooth as we can, and going forward. And I think I heard Ms. Starks say it before, we need to all have the same message going out, and the message has to be positive, and people can get us emotionally involved, you all know me, I can give, but we have to stay positive with these people, no matter how they-
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Just to share, in case anyone else in our wide-viewing audience is looking for it, we did find it on the website. I don't understand where it is, but if you search for Stratton, you can find it. Mr. Pierce, help me. So if anyone else wants to look at the PowerPoint, it is there.
Okay, cool.
Some of the most successful schools in the Commonwealth are K eights. There's nothing inherently good or bad about fourth graders being in the same building with eighth graders. I think that there's a lot of unknown ahead of us, but the K eight slots in Lowell, where it's all by parent choice, are the most highly sought-after seats, because people like that All I can say is that, as somebody who studies public policy and enjoys that part of it, as a town meeting member since ninety-two, we do different, business differently in Massachusetts, particularly in Massachusetts towns. So it's quite confusing for people who are not used to the way a town government works. And coming from New York, it's so totally different. And coming from New York, it's so totally different. The, the, the school boards have total autonomy over their, their operation. Towns are totally separate from schools. The funding is completely different. There are a lot of moving parts. We're getting a budget from the capital planning, we're, the building, the people are building a permanent town building committee, we have operational say. So it's, it's dispersed, and I think that parents who are not, don't understand the way we do business, are looking at all these moving parts and saying, how do we influence this, what's going on, without understanding what our constraints are and what, and what the process is. And I want to thank the superintendent, Ms. Starks, and the facility subcommittee for doing the work of engaging in the discussion and, and giving the lay of the land to the folks, so they understand what we're doing and what our motivations and constraints are. One last comment from Mr. Hayner.
Just a request to the chair. Dr. Bodie, could you send us, you do send us the regular enrollment figures and stuff, but can you give us the updated ones, just to keep you abreast of the considerations?
Yeah, projections for next year, right. Projections for next year, right.
Yeah. I don't have, the kindergarten numbers.
Or, or, no, district-wide.
You were talking.
You're talking about working from any set of numbers.
Yeah.
The modules permanent based on projected enrollment.
We're going to get that complete report, the final report, probably in a week.
Right, thank you.
You absolutely are going to get that.
We'll have it for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Next full meeting. District accountability, are we done, Ms. Starks?
Yes.
Okay. District accountability, curriculum instruction, and assessment, Mr. Thielman.
We're going to meet either on, you're actually available, Jed, on June 3rd, right? So, well, we're either going to meet June 3rd or June 8th, we're going to figure it out right after this.
You told me June 3rd was off.
Well, he didn't, I got an email, so you're free.
Well, I would like to do it earlier than the time that you listed, preferably, which is unusual for me, because I usually like it later or really early, but that day I'd need it, like, earlier than, I think, what did you say?
Well, I think the teachers would like to do it at 4:30 on June 3rd.
Yeah, so I'd love to accommodate.
All right, let me check with everyone's schedule, see if June 3rd at 4:30 works.
Um, June 3rd at 4:30. Is that right?
Well, do you have to be there?
Curriculum instruction.
Yeah, well, we're talking about the kindergarten.
Definitely needs to be there.
Yes, she definitely needs to be there.
All right, then I, you know, I had, okay, then I, we'll, we'll just meet real quick, figure out the time.
No, that's fine, 4:30 is fine on the June 3rd, if that's what you.
Why don't we do 4:30 on June 3rd?
Sure.
I'll just reconfirm with Linda tonight.
4:30 on June 3rd.
We'll keep it. There you go. Good, thank you, Jed. So we're going to meet 4:30 on June 3rd.
Obviously, next week.
That was five minutes of Riverling TV.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Community relations, Dr. Seuss.
We're trying to schedule a meeting, actually, we're waiting on Dr. Bodie's schedule to see what, what works.
Okay. Any announcements from the committee, Ms. Starks?
I just wanted to say, big congratulations to the ABGC rowing team, which is, I mean, not ABGC, Arlington Belmont, second-year state champs.
Wow.
Unbelievable. That is unbelievable. Public school champions. That is just awesome. I can't believe it, so that's really great. They worked hard.
Mr. Hayner.
The Memorial Day Parade, I'm happy to say, had a contingent first time of Scouts. They were daisies, they're the five-year-old Girl Scouts, and they marched in the parade, and they were all excited.
Oh, good.
Keep up with them? Did you keep up with them?
I was ahead of them, they had to follow me.
Yeah, okay. I had to move quickly.
Anything else under announcements, or? That brings us to our second executive session of the evening.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Just a quick plug for, a lot of Arlington students are participating this weekend in a show in, it's actually in Belmont, unfortunately, but it's a great town hall. The Sound of Music will be performed there at the Belmont Town Hall this weekend. A lot of Arlington students are in that show.
Okay.